Hi, good evening. Welcome to the Concord Town Meeting Study Committee meeting Logistics Subcommittee. This is August thirteenth. I'm Eric Moore, Chair. Thank you, everyone, for joining. Let's see, let's get into, yeah, right, clerk and roll. Who can clerk tonight? Would anybody like to clerk? Please? I know I always start with a tough question, right? Okay, I think I will clerk then. Eric Moore clerk. And let's go through and do roll. Let's see, Eric Van Loon, I see you.
Present.
Thank you. Alice Kaufman, I see you.
Yep, I'm here.
Yeah, thank you. Katie Bresnik, I see you.
Here.
Hey, thank you. Parashar Patel, I see you. You're on mute, actually, but I know you're there, I can tell you're there. And then Phil Swain, I see you as well. So let's see, we have quorum, Alice, Eric two, Parashar three, four, five, and six. So we'll move into approving, actually, we'll take public comment. I don't see anybody from the public on the call. So no public comment. We do have available meeting minutes from prepared by Kristen Hagerty from the August seventh meeting. So I'll begin by, I guess, may I have a motion to begin discussion of the meeting minutes for approval?
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
Thank you. So the meeting minutes prepared by Kristen Hagerty from our August seventh meeting. I'll say that I noticed, I got an email from David Allen pointing to a typo in the document referencing a comment that he made. And Shannon, may I ask you to make a couple of changes to the draft, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So David Allen's typo is, there's a reference to Maine, and it should be Massachusetts. It's easy to find that in the document. The other thing that I noticed was a really minor thing, but Survey Monkey is spelled out in a generic way, Survey Space Monkey. And I read it, and I'm like, what? But so it probably should be appropriately capitalized and and just a single word. It's really fickle, but prevents some confusion by somebody else. Did we have any other discussion on the minutes? I've seen them. Let's move to a vote. Boy, I hate doing a voice vote like this, but I believe it's the correct thing to do. Alice Kaufman?
Yes, I didn't read the minutes, so I could have stayed from the vote.
Fair enough. Eric Van Loon?
Aye.
Katie Bresnik?
Aye.
Parashar Patel?
Aye.
Phil Swain?
I abstain, I wasn't there.
Okay, okay. Well, it's a really question of having read the minutes or not, I guess. And Eric Moore, aye. So let's see. What does it mean in terms of approval if we had two extensions? One, 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 two, 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 three, two, four, two. So we don't have enough, we don't have a majority of the quorum to approve the minutes.
If we don't have a replacement for Wesley, is it technically a quorum if it's half?
I think it's one more than half. So I think we still need five.
Gotcha.
So, okay, well, we'll try again.
I don't think there's a requirement that a person be at the, having been at the meeting to vote to approve or not.
Correct.
Okay, in that case, based on the approvals of all of my colleagues, I I vote yes.
Okay, great. So then we have approved that the minutes are approved for August seventh. Great, moving on. Chair's comments. So I did see one member of the public has joined. We passed the moment of initial public comment, but you'll have an opportunity to comment later if it suits you, or ask a question later if it suits you. Keith Bergman is to the you have joined as well, thank you. So Chair's comments. So as noted, Leslie Coplo has left the committee, she's worked commitments that really precluded making the kind of time commitment that she wanted to make to our work. Replacement is pending, I don't know who that will be. Carmen is the appointing authority there. Also, Mark Howell, this may not be news already, but Mark Howell also, given the amount of committees that he's supporting through the Select Board, also stepped back from our committee. And then Cameron McKenna will be our Select Board Representative. I've had a had a good conversation with him, I've forwarded a lot of information to him, and then had a good follow-up conversation with him. So he has a sense as to what we're doing and you know, he asked about the kinds of things that, are you going to do a survey, those kinds of things? So I think it was good, from my perspective, to be able to say that where he had curiosities, that we have some work in place to sort of to work that way. So it was good. A consequence of Leslie and Mark stepping back is we have less know-how in the team with respect to town IT. So we'll see how that plays out. So it's interesting, right, shifting to meeting timing. With Leslie's schedule was constrained in terms of our ability as a whole committee to meet during the workday. In general, we've been working with these, you know, these subcommittees, quote unquote, with the idea of being able to accommodate people's schedules a bit better. So I'd like to, perhaps, you know, after Labor Day, look to see whether or not we can comfortably shift our schedules to perhaps we'll meet as a body again. And my thought would be that we would meet during the workday. I don't want to get people's comments on this because it's, you know, individual. But if you can consider that and get back to me as to whether or not it would be feasible for you to meet, you know, say Tuesdays, every other Tuesday at one o'clock or two o'clock, I'd like to hear that, please. Recognize the people of busy lives and so on, so, but thinking about how we can work more effectively together. We will come to, thank you, we will come to talking more about the work for the survey. But the bottom line is that we hope to launch the survey by October first, and that we'll need the team's help and basically doing outreach to get people involved. And we'll come back to that now, as I see that you're on, so you'll get a chance to talk more about the communication plan. One thing I'd like to talk about, and this maybe should be a proper agenda item, but I want to raise the question is that I see us having some hearings this fall, I'd like that. I know for sure that we should talk about electronic voting in a hearing format. That's my belief, happy to be challenged on that. And then I'm curious about what other sorts of hearings might make sense. You know, for example, some of the big, the big stuff, the fundamental stuff. So I get it, raise this as a discussion item, but I want to raise our consciousness for that. And maybe if we have time later on, we can come back to that if we have thoughts on that, if that's all right. Okay, so the survey, so the previous meeting of the Experiences Subcommittee talked about some initial work in the survey. And in that meeting, I won't recap it all, especially because some of the folks were on that meeting or else on the call tonight. You know, some, some architecture for the survey in terms of sort of the segment, the respondents in the survey sections. Let me just ask, who on the call has been through, has anybody who wasn't there for that meeting watched the video or read the minutes or have a sense as to what we covered or looked at the handout for that? So it looks like new information. So, so the survey from thirty years ago is actually, I think, pretty rigorous, and is a strong foundation for what we're doing this year. Again, we have sort of the architecture for the survey, what I'll call the architecture. And in the next meeting, which will be of the Experiences Subcommittee a week from today, we'll have a draft of the survey, a draft of the survey to review. What came out in the meeting packet the last time was an outline for the survey with a lot of information in it and included sample questions that it pulled from the ninety-six survey and some other things as well. So it's already a lot of material there, and the goal is to bring the material to a form that looks like it might be the survey, quote unquote, and to address some challenges around length, and to be clear, especially that the questions that we're asking are questions that we need answers to. I don't want to, I don't want to, we don't want to be asking questions that don't have high information value, either, especially for us, or for the respondents who may be learning through their work in the survey. So the frame, timeframe for this delivery of the survey is, we expect October first to, I think, November first. The plan, the intention is a postcard to all registered voters, postcard each to all registered voters. Our understanding from the discussion previously was that there should be budget for that, coming under the town meeting budget. Expected cost in the neighborhood of fifteen hundred dollars. A little lower than that was the quote, but you never know. And the work of communications, which Alice has taken leadership on. Work of communications, you know, inviting, a big, a big deal, so to speak, is basically inviting people, inviting groups to fill the survey out. And so Alice, I'm going to kind of segue to you unexpectedly. Just to say that if we look at an overview of the communications plan in terms of the outreach that our team would be doing, it's really looking for who's got contacts where, and who can help us set up either, you know, a channel for publicizing the survey, or a channel for, you know, again, publicizing and asking people to really follow up and filling out the survey. So here's, you know, a list of that. Alice, I'm just going to ask if there's anything you want to add to that before I retake some questions.
So it's more, I think I'd be, I am a person of one with another job, so I don't think I can do all of what's here on my own, and so I would look not only for help and contacts or who has expertise in an area, but somebody who has the ability to volunteer some time to do some of the legwork to get the information we want out to the segmented group of our population. Well, the one thing that we talked about needing is like the elevator speech, what is our pitch to each one of these groups that would entice them enough to work with us to complete the survey? And I think that's actually a group effort more than, I don't mind doing a straw poll, and I can, you know, write a draft of something, but I think that's a group effort of how we want to, what do we want to communicate and how do we want to do it? There, it's our own messaging. What's our sales pitch to the eighteen to thirty-five-year-olds, or the thirty to thirty-five to fifty-year-olds, or the fifty to sixty-four? And the folks who are usually there over sixty-five?
So, so
I'm guessing, for some of them, and different ways of communicating, which is what this plan looks at.
Got it. Good, thank you. Parashar, I see your hands, please?
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know if you're looking for additional, put on engagement partners in the channels, but seems like the school committees at the different schools, parent-teacher associations would be one, I don't see anything directly addressing school-ish. So that might be something we want put on both the school committee from a partner, as well as each of the individual schools on their own PTAs.
Got it. Yeah, we talked about them, and I don't know whether they're on the list, but that's, that's probably my error.
Well, number five says partnering with the schools.
Okay. Yeah, my finger's blocking that, that's okay.
It's okay, it may have faded down to the dropdown area, you know, I've kind of put a chart together, I may have missed it there, but it's in the narrative up above.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Katie Bresnik, I see you, please.
Yes, I was, had a comment on Alice's comment about having an elevator pitch. I did volunteer to reach out to the PTAs or PTOs, whatever they're called around here, about the survey, and Kristen sent me all of the contact information, so ready to go, but I thought it would be ideal to have that elevator pitch and make sure we have a consistent messaging whenever possible when reaching out, if that's something we want to do. So that's why I was holding off on reaching out to folks. So Alice, I think that's a great idea to get that elevator pitch going.
Do we want to take a minute and see if we can riff and just sort of sketch it? I mean, so Alice, what you said is really an elevator pitch, really for sort of each, each audience segment, but how could we begin? I mean, you know, if it's the, the basic pitch would be we're studying how to improve our local government. A big piece of our local government is town meeting. We'd love to hear your feedback about what works and doesn't work. It doesn't sound so exciting to me, but, but I'll just throw that out there and see if there's anything that might come to mind. I'm not going to commit us to sort of coming up with the elevator pitch now, but I'd like to get some ideas out there.
I personally feel like I can't do it on the fly, but I want to get, I don't spend this week and putting together a couple of, or two or three different pitches and see if any of them resonate with everybody, and I can send them to you. It just, I, it's the end of the day for me, and it's a long one, so I've not, my top writing, you know, more, I can get to it tomorrow.
Good, it's all good, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but
Oh, it hurts.
Oh, damn. Katie Bresnik, please?
Yeah, just a thought too, is when we have this elevator pitch, maybe something we can think about or talk about is how if we can alter that pitch, you know, slightly for the audiences we're speaking to, and whether that's okay with the group versus using the exact pitch, and I think that could be where we targeted a little bit towards our audience parents or the other groups we're speaking with, but something to consider.
Sure. Good, thank you. I'll talk a little bit more on this topic, and then we'll go to see if there's any comments or questions from the public as well. So we spent some time in the previous meeting looking at issue categories and solution categories with the idea of coming up with, I think, kind of a fairly simple set of categories that we can map issues and solutions against each other and kind of a heat map. And, and so that we can be methodical about how we're talking about the different options that we're exploring. I won't, we spent some time on this in the previous meeting. I'll say, you know, real, really simple level issue categories, you know, people being able to participate. If they do show up, how is it? In terms of, you know, is the public aware of what's going on? I think trust is an interesting problem. Interesting problem. I think, you know, when folks, we've talked about this, when folks don't get the outcome that they want from meeting, it's easy to go, hey, there weren't enough people here. I just don't, I disrespect that process, as it were. You know, the, yeah, and then I think, you know, from the public administration perspective, how well are we serving? And the solution categories, things that we can do again during town meeting in terms of operations, quote unquote, the procedures of meeting, timing in terms of when is meeting and how long is meeting? The communications part, information, how information is organized and with the workflow of that. And then I think the umbrella category is fundamentals, as we talk about different changes to, for example, having a referendum after meeting, or the idea of that, or you know, remote town meeting, the fundamentals category. So we had a lot of concerns from the public, this is my analysis, but it's consistent with the analyses that I believe it's consistent with the analyses that Katie and Kristen did, in particular with Kristen's analysis of bringing in the, both the Massachusetts moderators' report and looking at other town meeting studies. So again, credibility of the democratic process, as it were. Do people understand what a legislature is about locally? You know, how do members of the public understand the points of view of other members of the public? We can't solve all these problems, but again, these are concerns that affect the efficacy of town meeting, the success of town meeting. Does the public understand the needs for given policy? You know, public administrators have this challenge of, you know, I'm seeing it now, right? How do we, how do we balance our understanding of the needs of the town against our understanding of the will of the town? How do we know what the town wants? And then town meeting is a singular civic focal point for the town. Both, both in terms of being a decisive event, and it's also not necessarily a celebration, but a singular event in terms of presenting of the interface between the government of our town and the public. The three broad citizen concerns participation seems low. Town meeting is too difficult to attend, and being there can be frequently frustrating. And so just going a little bit deeper in the potential solutions, just to say that, you know, we've got these categories of solutions, and within each of these categories, subcategories, and ways to think about ending earlier, ways to think about weekend sessions. This is a superset of what we might do, and, you know, I'm raising it here, and not to so much discuss these, but to go, this is a set of things that, as we talk about different interventions in town meeting, that we're looking to sort of plug things under. And I think with that, I'll pause and see if we have any comments. Phil, was it you?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if this is too many issues to ask about in a survey, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I think we need to keep any survey to five questions or less.
Wow.
But I'm only saying that because I would love to have answered to all of these issues.
Yeah.
But I'm afraid that it will cause people not to even answer if we have sixteen questions.
Yeah.
So I say five questions or less, I would even say three questions, even though I would love to have more. But one participation, so we need to whittle this down.
Thank you. I think an approach for the survey is that we want to identify pretty early on by audience segment or respondent segment. Are you someone who comes to town meeting regularly? Are you someone who has no real interest in town meeting? Are you someone who would like to come more often? And then to condition, follow-on questions based upon that segmentation, so we would branch. And so my belief is that the folks who are least interested in town meeting are the least likely to give us real time in a survey. And I think if we can identify that, then certainly a very concise survey experience makes a lot of sense. I think, you know, for the regulars, I'd be willing to gamble that we could get more of their time in the survey. And it may be that a longer, a longer survey would make sense there. But your point is, people have very short attention spans, and we're at their mercy. So, thank you. Carmen Reese, I see your hand, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Phil's comment. I've certainly seen surveys where respondents can make choices, so that there might be five questions, and then if you wish to provide more information, you can click yes. I would like to answer some more questions, and then you get another layer. So that if you, if you have a kind of key three, four, or five questions you really want to get answered, you start with those, and people who are kind of all done with it at that point won't go any deeper, but that's okay, if you've got kind of your broad overarching questions upfront.
Good, good, thank you. Just on the topic of the survey and the survey design, Katie Bresnik, I see you as well, please?
I think Parashar had to stand up first, if you want to go with
Oh, I'm sorry, Parashar, I didn't see.
That's okay, go ahead, Katie.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we need to be careful with any, like, complex survey design, because the few respondents that we would end up getting answering like sub-question upon sub-question, it might not actually be a meaningful, like, we will get a select set of people who are already regulars and already going to attend, and maybe won't be like meaningful in terms of like making changes. So, and given that this is kind of a after-work commitment, I don't know that there's time to do anything like super complex to get the answers we want, so I think we'll just have to think carefully about selecting the questions and getting additional information, I think, a little bit from those who are engaged. But it's probably can't be super complex, is my thought.
Got it, got it, thank you. But Parashar?
Yeah, so yeah, it seemed sort of reflecting back on what we've seen from survey on ATM, et cetera. Some of the things that we understand folks are frustrated about. I'm curious, and maybe just food for thought, perhaps one question on, if I can be reserved for, what drives you to go to ATM, or you know, some words to that effect, in other words, so we know there can be some folks that are always going to be, but I think we are all presuming, based on observed behavior, that there's ballot box issues, or warrant, article issues that drive behavior. I think it would be helpful to actually just get that confirmed somehow.
Sure.
Because, you know, we struggle to do, make all sorts of changes for the structure and the format and timing of the meeting, which are all good, many of them probably do anyway. But at the end of the day, there may be some things that are beyond our control.
Absolutely.
And so it may be helpful, again, just to document this, or not only us, but residents who make the changes and say, well, what happened? You were ineffective.
Right.
Probably point to some documented evidence that says, this is what's really driving attendance.
Good, all right, thank you. Alice Kaufman, I see you, please?
When I'm looking again at the public administrator concerns, I think a lot of those can be addressed in one entry, in one paragraph, basically, that as part of our messaging, we tell people what our form of government is. We can't assess how much they know or how much they want to know, but let's assume they don't have a lot. And they'll leave what we put out, or they won't, but we have to be succinct. I think that's an appropriate thing for, you know, for us to prepare with the League of Women Voters, and talk with Concord Bridge about know your government. And I think they did a pretty good job last year, the bridge did a pretty good job last year on the lead up to town meeting, and I think that has to be an annual thing, because there are always new people who are interested in learning a little bit more than they knew last year, and are willing to read that extra paragraph. But I think we can do a pretty good short summary of our town government. Just assume that's where they get their info, here it is, your one paragraph.
Fair enough, good, thank you, thank you. Let's see, I'm going to move towards closing our discussion around the survey. I think the, you know, my ask as Chair is that as, you know, that we collectively identify groups that we can work with, and that we share the work of reaching out to groups to get the survey out to people. And we'll have a draft of the survey by next week. That'll, I'll send it, well, I'm going to do it in a Word document, but my hope is maybe I'll stand that up as a Google, a Google form, so we can see it online. And either way, I'll get that out to this group as well to review. And I think your feedback over the next few weeks is going to be really helpful for getting the survey rolling. So I ask as well, we give that some attention. Please. Alice, is your hand still up? Do you have something new? That's okay, sorry, my bad. I'll pause for a moment and see if there's any comment or question from the public before we move to the next topic. All optional, of course. Okay, good, thank you. So let's see, outcomes. So actually, Parashar, I wanted to stumble back because the next item was actually just an update on the peer, the peer of town, the peer town study. Do you have anything you want to share there?
I do, it's not ready for primetime, so what I've done is I've actually taken a list of eleven or twelve questions we had a couple of weeks ago. There'll be as much information as possible from the previous survey, Tom's websites, et cetera, so I've identified the gaps, and this week I'm going to prepare customized emails to the moderators of each town, kind of explaining what we're doing, and asking them to confirm our information and fill in the gaps. So hopefully, in the next week or two, we'll start rolling in how complete information for folks. What is interesting, you know, is all but two of the towns, for example, meet on Mondays, for example. So there's a number sort of interesting patterns that are coming out, again, not that we can't change our schedules, but it'll at least provide some food for thought, hopefully.
What, what, sorry, what do you mean by meet on Mondays?
So instead of weekends, they start the ATMs on Mondays, for example.
Oh, I see, I see.
And two out of the towns, two or maybe three out of the towns have started electronic voting in the last couple of years, too.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess in a couple of weeks, we'll look back and hope to hear more.
Yeah, I'm hoping to get that done before, I'm hoping to get responses back before the end of last. Yeah, I'm hoping to get that done before. I'm hoping to get responses back before the end of last.
Good, thank you. Um, good, thank you. Um, so, uh, let's go back to discussing, uh, outcomes. So I'm struggling with this a bit. Uh, um, how do we know the town meeting is better? How do we know that we've made, that we've improved our local government in the end? Uh, um, I, I don't know who else has worked with, with outcomes in this sense before. You know, I think Parrishar, you talked about, hey, you know, is it a goal that, that, you know, our average, our average participation is the highest in the state? Is it a reasonable goal without judgment, you know, or, or is it that, um, you know, that we can, we can assert that our town meeting is pretty representative? Uh, that the participation is, is quite representative? Is it that, you know, people come to meeting and say, oh, I had a really good meeting. I'm glad that I came. So, so the question about outcomes, uh, is, is squishy. Uh, and as well, I think, you know, managing, managing expectations for meeting is also difficult. Um, I think in my thinking about this over the past week was to say that, that we can look at outcomes for uh, different scopes at the town meeting level, uh, in terms of the overall legislative process of the town. Uh, and in terms of civic vitality. And, you know, I think our, our mission statement, uh, and, you know, as well, you know, I think that, that we, I, I, I believe that we cannot forget that, uh, um, part of what we're doing is, is to keep, uh, uh, keep a healthy, I don't have to say this, a healthy workforce of volunteer, uh, public administrators, a healthy workforce of town volunteers. Because if the civic life is, is tanks, then our ability to, to, to attract the talent we've been able to attract goes down as well. Um, so in the most focused way, and this reflects, you know, our focus, our mission statement, which is really focused in town meeting. You know, uh, uh, for the, to the goal of that all who want to attend can, you know, I think it would be, an outcome could be that, that we've identified and addressed all known and serve, you know, all known accessibility issues in terms of timing, in terms of how late the meeting goes, in, in terms of, uh, in terms of other communication things. Um, yeah, I don't know how else to measure that, right? Um, when we talk about making town meeting more effective, you know, I think the issue is when that we make, you know, if the goal is to make efficient use of people's time, then the question is when, you know, when does the meeting drag, right? Uh, and a way to measure that outcome is to ask people after meeting or to survey, how was the meeting for you? There are different ways to do that. Um, but, and, you know, is it that, that, uh, you know, what's the before and after for that, so to speak? Uh, we'll come back to that. I think Katie, you raised that before. Um, you know, I think that people have the, you know, you know, again, in terms of making well-informed decisions, um, um, did you think that the debate was good tonight? Uh, were there, you know, were people asking questions that you thought were not helpful? Uh, was there a lot of repetition in terms of how, in terms of the points that people were making? Um, uh, in terms of responsive, you know, I think the, that, you know, the work of this committee, the published work of this committee, uh, is a demonstration of responsiveness, though, you know, we need to improve things as well. Uh, um, I think, you know, to, so, so, uh, a part of it, I think, is, is I'd like to feel that, that um, the, the intention of town meeting and town meeting in the context of our legislature, our, our local legislature is better understood. And I think that that would help uh, in general, the public go, oh, this is what it is. We'll come to that slide in a second. Uh, and, you know, finally, that, that we are able to say, and maybe it won't be true, uh, we have to do this work yet, but to say that our particip- participation is measurably representative. And so, you know, what troubles me is that a lot of this looks pretty subjective, uh, qualitative, uh, you know, as well. And maybe that because we're talking largely about experience, maybe that's the best that we can do. Uh, Katie, I made the point in her previous meeting, uh, you know, if we're gonna look at afters, if we're gonna look at outcomes, we need, uh, it would help to have a baseline. What's the before, so to speak? Uh, and, uh, and maybe, you know, maybe we can get some of that through the survey as well. Um, but, you know, clearly, you know, we do things for town meeting twenty-five, you know, there are effects that happen later. The questions about outcomes are things that we're gonna have to assess the town or, you know, in effect, the moderator will need to assess over the, over the coming years. Um, and finally, this seems very granular to me. I mean, by design, we focused our mission on meeting, but, uh, it also seems pretty granular. Uh, Parrishar, I see your hand. Uh, let me just, uh, uh, please.
Yeah, so you're right. Many of these things are by nature subjective, right? I'm in the healthcare field and and you've got hard clinical measures, how much, what percentage your arteries are blocked, etcetera, but more and more folks are looking at patient-reported outcomes, you know, how do you get people, etcetera.
Yeah.
Perhaps one measure that might be all encompassing, that we might want to consider both in the survey and afterwards is willingness to recommend. So now
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Want you to be willing to recommend to fellow citizens that they attend town meeting.
Right.
And you sort of gauge that level today.
Right? Yeah.
And then you measure it at the end after we've put in some changes in next town meeting and maybe you keep repeating that over the next couple of years to see how things have improved or declined. WTR is used all over business and other places, right?
Sure.
As a great measure to see how effective you are overall.
Sure, sure. Good, thank you. Um, so, uh, this, you know, I've, I've spent, I feel like I've learned a lot about town meeting and I'm sure that I have a lot more to learn. Um, but I think these things surface for me in terms of sort of what I'll say, a sort of truth about town meeting. Uh, and they, to me, relate to what, what we can, uh, think about as feasible outcomes. Uh, and what, what things that sort of, you know, kind of constrain the outcomes that we can consider. So just to say that, you know, the, the, um, at town meeting, there's a lot of variation, a lot of variability and the work, the work to be done, right? Because there's different kinds of articles and, you know, s- speaking very broadly, there's a budget approvals that we need to make. Uh, and then on the other extreme or the other, other poll, there are, can be a variety of citizen petitions. I mean, focus and bylaws and advisories, but, but, um, uh, it's a different, it's a different kind of, it's a different kind of work. Um, you know, we have some really easy choices and those things are folded into the consent calendar, uh, and some difficult choices to make, uh, that, you know, close outcomes. Uh, we have proposals that, you know, with select board, FinCom, you know, every, everyone agrees, we, we, you know, we endorse this. Or like going back to the previous meeting, uh, where there was a difference, there was contention between boards about what to recommend or not. Uh, and, you know, we have some things that the people are really engaged by. For example, the previous meeting, there was a lot of engagement with the Alan Garrison uh, uh, school naming question, uh, and other things that, that, you know, don't ordinarily attract a lot of, a lot of engagement. So there's a lot of variation in that. And part of that variation to me comes from the fact that that town meeting is the culminating phase of a longer legislative process. And when Carmen was speaking at the Legal Women Voters event last, in November of, uh, uh, twenty-three, uh, she, you know, uh, put town meeting in the context of, of, of a longer legislative process, that, that, um, you know, our work as a legislature culminates in town meeting, these are my words. But that, you know, going back to even, even how people are pointed to boards, um, but the work of boards and committees in developing policy that goes through, that, that floats down the river, as it were, um, i- is the beginning there. Um, you know, the thing about town meeting is that we make decisions at town meeting. That's, that's different than any other, that, than, than other, other things. Um, you know, the issue of, 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 um, really it's difficult or high contention, really difficult, uh, uh, debate. Um, you know, you can spend a lot more time and a lot more depth in a board meeting than you can at a town meeting, talking about it, you know, it's a smaller group of people. Uh, um, you can go deeper in, in a board meeting. And that's a, uh, an interesting piece of the process. I, I think you could argue that maybe town meeting isn't really a good forum for having a really complicated debate. Um, uh, it's an argument. Um, and so, so, um, uh, it's a typo there. Um, but, you know, there are also necessary debates, right, that, that happen at town meeting. Uh, so on one hand, it's nice if the things that come to meeting are simple, right? On the other hand, you know, citizen petitions, uh, um, unresolved positions, for example, you know, a conflict between, uh, uh, you know, a disagreement between the school committee, uh, and, uh, the finance committee. Uh, and, you know, things that reflect, I'll say visions and values of the town are things that really town meeting is really great for. It's really important for. Um, so it's a funny thing that way. And then finally, that, that, um, democracy, as I'm beginning to understand it, is so much more about safeguards and efficiencies, right? That, that democracy, you know, enables majorities to act with protections for, for political minorities. You know, and legislature is a, is a huge piece of that, uh, and then also restrictions and singular authority. Um, so, you know, legislatures are really fundamental to democracy. Uh, and it's easy to sort of forget that when you look at just, I want to get my vote in for town meeting. Uh, you know, and again, as well, that, that disagreement is fundamental to democracy. Uh, and the town meeting is a really great space for that, but maybe not the best space. That maybe there, some of the really hard discussions that we need to have around policies are better in, in, uh, uh, a committee or hearing format. Um, so this is a lot of talking, but the idea again is to say, look, if we look at what town meeting is fundamentally in the context of our legislative process, in the context of a democratic process, it's supposed to be slow. Yeah, there's parts of it that are supposed to be slow. There's supposed to be debate. Uh, uh, it's not necessarily gonna be, oh, I can just come in. It's not an election. It's really different. So this is my, my takeaway, and I wanted to talk about this to frame how we can look at broader outcomes and just meeting. Uh, I'm not sure that this is useful, uh, but let me ask if it makes sense to everyone or, 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 or if there's some sharp disagreements about it. So I'll keep going. So, uh, looking at legislative outcomes for voters. Um, so I, I think we've had some discussions, uh, with the idea that voters should participate in, in civic processes. And I think, uh, on one hand, I'm pretty sympathetic to that. I think on the other hand, uh, I don't think that, um, the public thinks that way. Uh, and I'm, you know, as a parent, uh, as a parent of a twenty-two-year-old, I'm, I'm learning, you know, to, to step back from shoulds a- and my role as, as a, as a leader and of, as a, you know, an authority figure in somebody's life. And I, I wonder, you know, as we look at legislative outcomes as well, uh, and civic involvement, whether we should step away from shoulds as well or be careful about them. So if I take that framing, then it's that, you know, what good outcomes are for our legislature is that voters can make informed choices of whether to participate or not. Uh, uh, I'm well, you know, that voters are, are, if, you know, if they choose to be informed, it's clear where to go and what to do. Uh, so, so, uh, uh, and then, and this speaks to accessibility, right? If I do choose to participate, it's accessible and it's a good experience of participating. If at meeting, uh, or someplace else, if I choose to speak up, it's clear how to contribute to constructive debate. And then deliberation, it's clear how to see someone's, in my interest, in the context of the interest and views of others. So this to me seems pretty fundamental for sort of a, a, a good legislature where people are making choices about to be involved or not. Uh, and it begins with people being able to make well-in, well-informed choices about whether to participate or not. Um, uh, yeah, Katie, please.
I just wanted to support, I think this makes a ton of sense. And I think this from someone in my life phase, um, and knowing other peers who are, you know, busy with kids all the time, I think there shouldn't be any shoulds because there isn't a lot of time for people to do all the things that they would like to do. Um, and so all of these make sense. I think you should, you know, choose to be informed. You know where to go. It should be easy. Um, so I think this resonates well with me, um, and I think it, it aligns, I think, should align with the work we're doing.
Good, thank you. Uh, Carmen, please.
I, I just wanted to note that there's a, um, uh, a book by a woman named Susan Clark about town meeting, which is called Slow Democracy.
Saying that.
So.
All right.
I, I think your concept is spot on.
Oh, good. Good, thank you. Uh, Keith Bergman, please.
Uh, thanks very much. I'm particularly draw, uh, fir- first, thanks to the chair for doing all the, um, uh, prep work for, for each of these meetings and for taking us through uh, the thought process. It's a, it's very compelling and helpful. This slide really speaks to me. Uh, when we were talking earlier about how will we know success when we see it? Uh, this list is it. Uh, and when I think about what, you know, what, what improvements I would want to be part of and in, you know, making town meeting more effective, this is that, this really is, is that list. Uh, it, it's, you know, those choosing to participate uh, uh, can, uh, need to, need to know how, how to do that, how, how to participate at town meeting. Those who don't choose, well, that's their choice and we're not telling them that they should. We, we're telling them that this opportunity, uh, exists and that a town meeting that, that, uh, uh, consists of people that are all excited to be there, happy to be there, understand how to, how to participate, uh, is, I think, the ultimate, uh, measure of success for, for a town meeting. Uh, there may be other things that we want to do that, or that Concord wants to do that are about being more efficient, generally be more responsive, have, uh, more, um, accountability when decisions get made. Those things don't get answered in a town meeting form of government, though they get answered in a change of government to, you know, like a, a, a town council, uh, which we're not, which we're not taking up. But on the matter of how do you make a town meeting better, this, this list really speaks to me. And, and I, I wanted to, uh, make a point, um, about how to, uh, approach, uh, some, some of the mechanics of the, these issues. As the chair said at the outset, we have a, we're, we're down a couple of committee members who had some knowledge of town IT. And I think that, uh, one of the, one of the things that I've committed to do, and I talked to the, to the chair about it recently, is, um, to, and I, and, and I talked to to the town manager as well, and we'd have her permission to do it. And that is to interview uh, the, the key, to have, say, a subgroup of this committee, the chair and myself, and, you know, what it more, uh, up to the point where we're below a, a quorum. Talk to the town staff who are, uh, who are working on getting the inform, the information that voters need for town meeting, the logistics, all of, all of the hows and the whats of that lead up to and, and lead to the, the conduct of town meeting. And see what specific suggestions or ideas that they have to maybe make the system more um, effective, as well as to bounce some of the ideas that we've talked about uh, 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 o- off of them, so, so that, so that we've gone through that process. So I, I would see that as an important next step. I'm back and I'm back in Concord, uh, 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 next week, uh, probably for the, the rest of the month and, um, and beyond. And so would, uh, uh, look, be looking to set up, uh, uh, and we have the town manager's permission to set up a, a series of interviews with key staff. So, thanks.
Thank you, Keith. Um, I, I think before the meeting closes, we'll come back to the topic of setting up conversations, just to figure out how to queue it up. Um, uh, thank you. Uh, let's see, um, uh, I have one more slide, uh, on this topic. Uh, and I, I hasn't, this, this one was well received, so I don't want to go to this one, but I think, um, um, you know, is there a way to talk about, for lack of a better word, vitalities? Note the, note the Vs here, um, so that, you know, that each of us, you know, if we're doing really well, right? Each of us has, I'll say, a vision for, for who we are as a town. I'll call those civic narratives. You know, I, I don't readily assure what we mean by town character. When I say I like town character, good schools, you know, that, that I know what good schools really means to me. You know, might be that, you know, the, the kids who come out of Concord schools have a, are competent and have a good sense of well-being. I, I don't know. But, you know, or when I say, oh, that I want Concord to be inclusive, what does that mean? But that each of us has visions for what we think Concord is and should be, and that that's, it's tangible and concrete. Um, so this is quite aspirational, but when I think about really talking about, uh, 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 of civic vitality, these are the dimensions that, that surface for me. Uh, that we have views, and by that I mean that we have an awareness of what's going on and well-informed. I mean, the paper, the paper's good. You know, that, that I can go to the town website and see the situation of the town. You know, perhaps that it's that the town manager's weekly report is easy to find, I don't know. But that, that the information about the situation in the town is available, accessible, uh, uh, and understandable. Um, third, that, and this goes to the, the, uh, the, the, uh, uh, goes to, again, to democracy, that when I do have an opinion, I have a means to voice it so that it can be heard by power, right? That I can write a letter to the select board. That I can write a letter to the select board, uh, I can speak up at town meeting, you know, uh, I can write a letter to the paper. Uh, you know, the, one of the really amazing things about our our town meeting is the citizens' petition. Um, and so that there are different ways for, you know, my voice as a citizen to be heard, uh, or to be raised. Um, and then finally, you know, that we can vote, right? That that I can, I can go to a meeting and vote, I can go to a ballot box and vote, as it were. Uh, because that that is an essential piece of it as well. So this is much more abstract, but when I think about, um, trying to talk a little bit about um, why town meeting matters, uh, and why civic participation matters, I'm thinking about, is there a way, you know, this isn't exactly a an umbrella speech, an elevator pitch. But when I think about the aspects that we're trying to bring together in improving our town meeting experience and improving our experience as a legislature, maybe this is simple enough, or maybe it's still complicated. Um, I'm gonna move forward, uh, to take, uh, any citizen, uh, comments or questions at this point uh, on the topic of outcomes. Uh, how do we know that we've made a, we've made things better? Uh, and David Allen, member of the public, I see you, uh, please.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, hi.
I must say I resonate with your very last, that we can vote. Uh, coming from the Midwest, as I did many, many decades ago. I was astounded at this direct democracy that we have here. What a, what a precious thing. If I may go back, uh, across these points, uh, and, uh, offer a second on a couple of them. Um, first, uh, particularly that uh, this is a process, said before, year-long process, you've emphasized that. Uh, I think it's exactly right that the place for the contentious discussions is in the committees. And frankly, a well-run committee, uh, doesn't have to see it as contentious, can set it up so that both sides, uh, uh, argue their points. Uh, I think it's also the case that there will be outcomes, uh, that necessarily reach town meeting without resolution, you've pointed out.
Sure, yeah.
Between the select board and the school committee, uh, but we've seen it in the naming of the school. Uh, so that, uh, crucial to emphasize the role of the year-long process at the same time, knowing that civility in the meeting is going to be important to, if I could, forgive me, if I could, uh, let that feed into the second, second here. Uh, uh, that, um, um, oh, hell, dropped out of my head, wouldn't you know. Uh, what the hell, I'll come back to it.
Uh, fair enough.
Too much.
Yes.
I'll come back to it.
Okay, you'll get another swing at the it'll be right at the apple. All right, thank you. Um, um, let's see, that, uh, is all I had on outcomes. Uh, Katie Bresnik, please.
I wasn't, I I mean, I think this might be a little bit off topic, but maybe falls in the vein of recommendations at, you know, the end of this journey together. Um, and may have some, be something the town has explored before, but perhaps having some sort of like newcomer welcome sheet about what town meeting is, when it is, how it's a process, something kind of succinct, one-pager that new people to town, or if we start off and send it to folks who've moved into town in the last couple of years. It took me a few years to know that this was actually happening, and then to figure out how to get involved. Um, so that might be helpful for for folks. Um, I don't know that that's in the remit of our committee, but could be a recommendation we give to the town.
Let me ask, thank you, let me ask for folks who've been around. Um, we used to vote, did we have sort of like a welcome wagon or something like that in Concord? If you moved to town, you know, did their real, did your realtor hook you up with a a a a welcome basket or something like that? How do you, uh, Alice?
I don't know the answer to that question, but Katie, you know, had me start thinking about that too.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mentioned it at the last meeting, and one of the things I thought about was, um, at the new home transactions, that every realtor provide a little bit, know your town. This is how government works in our town.
Right.
Something that the realtors give at every single closing. And that's your first.
That's a handout.
There's a welcome wagon, um, I think neighborhoods sometimes do things on the road, but I don't think there's a.
So, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, um, who I don't know who would own that, so to speak. I mean, I was thinking that the economic vitality would be, um, uh, the, perhaps the right place to talk about, uh, you know, a welcome to Concord, you know, there's, there's a lot, there's some nice collateral now about, you know, for example, the West, West Concord, you know, retail district or whatever, and and, uh, you know, I I don't know if if, uh, yeah, it's a good, it's a good question, I really don't know. Um, yeah.
It seems like this could be something that falls under a lot of umbrellas, because I could see something like even how trash collection works. When I moved here, I was like, wait, there's a sticker, where do I get the sticker? What, uh, there's a lot of little tidbits that would be helpful to know and have in one place, whether it's at your closing or you get it in the mail a couple of weeks after you move, when you're trying to figure out all this stuff, but I think I, folks are probably keenly interested to understand their new community.
Yeah.
And that's a good time to engage.
Yeah, I wonder if the D E I committee would be interested in that. Uh, it seems very logistical, right? But I think, you know, lowers the lowers the bar to belonging as well, so. Uh, Carmen, I see you, please.
Just that, I'm I'm not aware of a welcome wagon.
Yeah.
Either, um, but I, um, uh, my other community is, uh, Chappaquiddick Island, um, off of Martha's Vineyard, and we do have a, um, uh, a welcoming committee, and we do have an insider's guide um, that's was put together by the Chappaquiddick Island Association, and it's got, you know, it's got everything you would like to know in it.
Right.
About living in the community, you know, what what do you do, you know, what do you do? Question, so, uh, you know, you you could see how I I I think we rely very much on websites now, and I think the assumption is that you want to find something out, you're gonna go to the town website and you're gonna crash.
Right.
Um, and see if you can figure it out. Um, and that probably is a resource that a lot of people do use, but, um, uh, I don't know, it seems like a lovely idea to have, uh, a booklet that uh, that, you know, perhaps the, um, the, um, uh, the, um, Economic Vitality, uh, Committee, uh, puts together and makes sure that all the real estate agents have a copy of it so that they can give it to people who, uh, buy new houses in Concord, and it could have all kinds of stuff in it. So anyway, it's kind of beyond our scope, but
Sure.
but it's, um, it's a real potential synergy, it seems to me.
Yeah, that's nice. Good, thank you. Um, let me think for a moment, I think, uh, um, uh, we've gone through what I had, uh, in terms of stuff from me to talk about, we checked in with Parashar. Um, Eric Van Loon, uh, I just want to ask, uh, if there's any updates on on, I know you were away for a chunk, right? But any updates in terms of the questions around, uh, the, um, understanding the legislative picture on on, uh, home rule around a remote town meeting? Uh, uh, anything new there, or?
Uh. Essentially, there's a number of towns who have filed petitions. And one of the things that I thought was in the survey, we could say, under current state law, uh, it's not possible, uh, for people to participate and vote in remotely and vote in town meeting. However, however, a number of towns have, uh, started to petition the legislature for more permission, uh, or approval to do that. How about, would, would, would you favor Concord joining with those other towns and petitionate?
I see, yeah. Um, um, good, uh, I think, um, uh. Good, I I think I have a really weird thought about a petition, uh, which is that um, there's a lot of different things that we could do, uh, a town could do uh, in terms of changing the way the deliberation works, right? And the Australian ballot is one of them, remote voting is one of them, a proxy vote is another one. An absentee ballot is another one. And so none of that stuff is feasible, right? I mean, it's all, you know, it it all requires home rule, uh, to my knowledge, all of it requires a home rule petition. Uh, but if you look across, you know, Wayland and, you know, the other ten or whatever towns that have filed home rule petitions for different ways of conducting deliberation, most of it remote voting. Um, I I wonder if uh, the appropriate way to think about legislation would be legislation that allows towns to experiment in terms of constructing, uh, conducting deliberation in different ways. So it's not so much that town by town, you know, we go, oh, we'd like to do this thing. Uh, uh, but that, um, it would be, uh, legislation that allows uh, towns to make a class of interventions and deliberation. Uh, so that, you know, across the state, as towns try different things over five years or ten years, uh, we can learn collectively what works better in terms of, in terms of, you know, conducting democracy, you know, local democracy in these times. Um, so that to me is a really weird thought, and it reflects a certain degree of legislative naivete. Um, but I think, you know, perhaps is as, you know, you talk with with Simon Cataldo or Carmen Gentile or 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 whomever, that that might be a thing that you can explore. You could say, a guy in my committee wanted to ask about it. But but is there an opportunity that way to look at a a broader class of of of, uh, legislation for, to allow, I'll say, more innovation, more more experimentation, local democracy? Is that a really bad idea, Eric? Uh, you're on mute, so.
Sorry, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think that, uh, uh, it does make sense. Obviously, the whole legislature is right now in a, in a terrible student for the way that they ended the session and all of the efforts to try to have a special session and and all of that, so it's not the best time in the world to, uh, to get
Sure.
focused attention. I think that essentially in a month, when there's sort of a fresh look, when when the repercussions of the way the legislative session ended uh, are are behind us, is is, uh, that that's a reasonable time to ask that kind of question.
Perfect, perfect, we'll loop back in a month or so and see where things are at that way. Good, thank you.
The one other thing I can say, Eric, is that, um, just given the way the legislature works, the on the whole, the more sort of, uh, flexible or every which a way or nonspecific that a proposal is, that actually makes it harder.
I see, yeah.
Get through something narrow-focused, here's what we're talking about, it's kind of, uh, okay.
Uh huh.
Um, but that also can change, so.
Got it, good, all right, thank you. Um, uh, Alice, I see you, and then Keith, uh, Alice, please.
I have, uh, two thoughts, a comment basically, uh, from Eric. Uh, you know, I'm thinking that what happened when we went to try to get a a ban on new fossil fuel hookups at at town meeting. What ended up being the solution from the legislature was a ten-community pilot. There were something in the neighborhood of fifty communities who signed on to basically wanting to do the same thing that Concord wanted to do.
I see, yeah.
And so this, when the state said, oh, my gosh, we're not ready to give fifty different, you know, home rule petitions, they weren't ready to vote on a state law, but they were willing to have a ten-community pilot, and we
I see, yeah.
That kind of approach, so that's, you know, kind of speaks to where Eric was. But I have this perception about town meeting, and maybe you guys have already talked about it at a meeting I wasn't here, just tell me to be quiet. But we get a good, a good number of people show up on the first two nights. It's that third night that people are just draining out, like, even if there are interesting topics coming up on that, there is just one night too long to be able to attend. And, you know, I'm wondering whether this group before, one of the meetings I missed, had discussed whether we could think about all of the citizen petitions happening off-cycle. The citizen petitions are heard in the fall.
Uh huh.
And all the important legislative decisions about the running of town government, the financing of our budgets, the school happen when we need them to have room for rights, establishing our budget for the year. So then you've got a one night and a, and a two-night, so.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, we haven't talked about that. Um, I think the other towns have looked at two nights, um, uh, and it's it's certainly worth talking about, I'm sure we'll find pros and cons with that. Um, I think, you know, something else that we have not talked about is the idea of ending every, ending every meeting at nine-thirty and going for four nights, so that we're not exhausting people after the first two nights. Uh, so that I think there are some things, you know, some things to look at that way. Um, so, uh, thank you. Um, Keith, I see you, uh, and then we can get to Carmen. Uh, Keith, please.
Yeah, I, uh, I I'd want to, uh, just follow up on Alice's, uh, comment about the pilot project for the fossil fuel free that that it came to my mind, uh, where, and where I'm a little, I'm not as familiar with that as I am with the uh, thus far unsuccessful effort at getting a real estate transfer fee for affordable housing passed by the legislature. But in in that case, we were pushing very, we we are, Concord is part of a coalition of of, uh, at least eighteen other communities that were seeking a whole, uh, real estate transfer fee, home rule petitions, uh, and many more communities that would have liked to have had the option of of doing it if a general law passed. And, um, and so I think, I think that could be an avenue for some of the things that we're looking at that uh, that would require, um, legislative approval. Uh, it's not gonna, I'm convinced it's not gonna happen just for Concord because we asked, but if we were asking in concert with other communities and had sort of worked out the bugs uh, between any differences that that, uh, the, um, that, uh, there there's some feedback, uh, that, uh, because we had so many different home rule petitions with little tweaks and and differences, uh, that turned, that turned the legislature off, and it was too much for them to process. And so having like communities work together, it's a long-term strategy, though, it's not short-term. Uh, but, uh, and and then the other side of that is the among the many things, the legis, this legislature of ours in in Massachusetts failed to pass this year was the Governor's, uh, Municipal Empowerment Act, which had dozens of little, uh, uh, tweaks to the law to make things work better. Uh, many of, including things like, oh, continuing to be to be able to have, uh, uh, public, uh, board meetings on on, uh, held virtually.
Oh, wow, yeah.
That ex, that permission expires next year, and and so it's an uphill ba, it's an uphill battle. Uh, if the issue, though, well, if some of the things that we're looking for in some of the petitioned articles were to, uh, were to proceed, especially, uh, uh, especially things like remote voting, not gonna, you're not gonna get that just for one town. Uh, the idea of having, uh, to have, uh, uh, a ballot question to ratify every town meeting vote.
Right.
You're not gonna get that, and you shouldn't get it. If you want that, you should have a town council and
Right, I see, yeah.
Take out the middle man. So, uh, so anyway, that's, that's the, thanks.
Good, thank you. Um. Yeah, uh, so practically, uh, it comes back to, you know, you're not gonna get that soon, buddy, right? So, should we spend time on on some of those things? I think, you know, we discussed, uh, previously that, you know, if we can establish, we have evidence that the town wills, you know, remote voting or something else, then it it helps, uh, support a petition in one form or another. It helps inform, you know, the the effort to go forward. But as a practical solution, don't don't hold your breath. Uh, it could be five or ten years out, even if it, if if we judge it to be the right thing to do. So thank you, Keith, um, Carmen, please.
I I just wanted to, uh, follow up on Alice's comment about, uh, possibly dividing the town meeting into two different meetings, an annual and a special, and, you know, that was one of the recommendations of the ninety-six study um, for precisely the reason that Alice mentions, that it would make the meeting shorter. And, um, you you certainly could decide that. you, you certainly could decide that, uh, the annual town meeting would have all the budget articles, capital and operating, um, budgets, and you have to do those in the spring because you've got to deal with the fiscal year. So tho, those have to be done at that time of year. Um, but many towns regularly have a special town meeting in addition to the annual town meeting where they take up the zoning articles and any bylaw changes, et cetera. It's hard with citizen petitions because, um, uh, citizen, uh, citizens have the right to file a citizen petition in either an annual or a special town meeting under the statute. And the signature requirement is much less for an annual town minute, meeting. You only need 10 signatures. You need 100 for a special town meeting. And so, um, persuading people who wish to file a citizen petition to wait till the special town meeting when they have to get 100 signatures instead of 10 may be challenging. Um, but, but that could be, um, y, y, you know, a, a change like that could be something that you potentially could ask for through home rule legislation to, um, allow the town to, uh, you know, the town's going to hold an annual and a special every year and we want all of our citizen petitions to go to the special town meeting. And, uh, and then maybe you pair that with, with, um, uh, a difference uh, in, in what the signature requirement is there so that you're not making it 100. Maybe you make it 10 if for the first, the first special in a, in a year. But anyway, that's, that's just something to, to think about there. Um, and starting the meeting on a Sunday also allowed us to have a two-day meeting instead of a three-day meeting. Because we would go longer on the Sunday and then we were, um, the, the, the couple of times that we did it, we were then able to conclude uh, the rest of the meetings business on Monday. So that was just two. And then, um, just on, uh, Keith's observation about the, the home, I've been watching this home rule process for a lot of years now. Um, and, um, I've been watching it for like the last 16 years. And, um, uh, I think it's, it's, uh, really clear that, uh, you, you know, unless it's, we want an extra liquor license, the legislature doesn't really like home rule, um, petitions. There is a general feeling that, well, you know, if it's going to be a good idea for one town, you know, we should, maybe we should, you know, spend more time looking at this and do a general opt-in statute, like for example, the uh, hotel tax or the optional local meals tax, which, um, they created as an option for any town that wishes to adopt it. Um, but when all of the different petitions come in looking different, they do kind of throw up their hands. And the fossil fuels one was kind of an interesting situation because there were 10 communities that were working on it and they all got together and made sure, and Alice, you were part of that, they, they, they made sure that, that everybody's petition looked the same. And that gave, uh, the town's strength and, uh, in commanding the attention of the legislature. And it was one of the important things I know in Mike Barrett's uh, thinking about paying attention to that and saying, well, let's do it as a pilot program. There are things we're worried about here. There, there are things we, we're, we fear unintended consequences, but we're, we're willing to do it on a, on a pilot basis with 10 communities. So.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Um. Yeah, Alice, perhaps after we get through the communications period for the survey, the question around how to potentially coordinate, uh, uh, or where, where we might coordinate with might be in it. Uh, we'll, we'll come back to that. I'd like to know more about how the fossil fuels worked. Um, David Allen, I'll get to you in just a second. Um. Um, so Keith, a, around, uh, conversations with, uh, uh, town staff, I, you know, I, after, after hearing your suggestion, I made a list. Um, and I think, you know, perhaps is that when, when we meet again in two weeks, uh, uh, we can see who's interested in talking to whom, uh, and, and then schedule that way. Good. All right, thank you. Um. Um, I think I'd like to come back to the question about, uh, what hearings, uh, what hearings uh, and how to organize them. Uh, we can conduct this fall. I won't do that tonight. Uh, but I'll, I'll say again, um, that I, I think we're, we're, uh, would be very good to conduct a hearing around electronic voting, the clickers. Uh, and I'm very open to other, other, other discussions uh, around, around that. So I'd like to come back to that in a couple of weeks. And if you can give that some thought, please. Um. Uh, Parashar will check in in two weeks. Uh, hopefully we'll see more. And then again, uh, and the experiences meeting coming up next week, uh, we'll have a, a survey draft to review. Uh, and I'll have that spreadsheet updated as well with the heat map. Um. Uh, uh, so David Allen, uh, if you'd like to comment, I'll go to you or question, and then Alice, I see your hand as well, sorry. Uh.
Thanks.
David Allen, yeah, are you still interested in this?
Thanks again, Eric.
Yeah.
Uh, let me report on a recent Zoom. I may have mentioned this, I forget now, frankly. Um. We had more than half a dozen towns, as well as some people at the state level discussing remote participation. I believe my memory is correct in saying that, uh, one of the principal plans was indeed a pilot of as many towns as might be interested precisely in the sorts of things that have been raised here. Uh, Carmen Gentile's aide was a part of that. Uh, part of uh, facilitating this coming together of folks. Uh, I can tell you that's the direction we'll go. I've certainly discussed it with, uh, Dave Bernstein over in Wayland.
Mm-hmm.
Times. Uh, there is zero question that it's essential, as has been said, to come forward with uh, exactly the same text for each town. Of course, a pilot, uh, would do that. Uh, I also noticed that, uh, to get there, you've got to get as many towns as want to come together. Uh, and that's onesies and twosies. And that's this critical mass issue of the snowball beginning to roll up and that's what we are about here. Let me notice that this is in appreciation for weird ideas. I believe that was what you called it. Uh, to pick up a word that is popular nationally right now.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh, Alice, please.
Um, I guess this is a question for Keith. I kind of remember early on in our meeting process that Keith had prepared a pretty interesting memo to all of us about Littleton and what it did to the lead up to town meeting. And Keith, is that, is that right? Do I remember that you were the author of this piece about the?
That was the call of the articles.
Yeah, uh, yes, I, I had a memo that, uh, proposed, uh, uh, two, two town meetings, uh, per year and an annual in a fall so that we'd be having one every six months or so. Uh, yeah, the, uh, the, uh, call of the uh, articles, uh, to allow the, at town meeting, to allow the voters themselves to determine what the consent calendar, uh, look like, and then to have a, uh, comprehensive report, uh, which Littleton called the, the town meeting report, the Don't Leave It At Home book, uh, which was mailed out to, to all the voters a couple of weeks in advance with the, with the warrant. Full text of the, of the warrant, uh, uh, for each article, you could read the warrant article followed by all of the, uh, by, by the motion that, uh, that was being made under that article, a, a listing of all the boards and how that, that had uh, made a recommendation and, and, um, on that article. Uh, and then an explanation in plain English, uh, so that as you went from, as the debate went from one article to another, you just had to turn the page instead of juggling, uh, the warrant in one, on one lap, the, uh, the FinCom uh, report in another and, and shuffling all the handouts that you got, uh, at a town meeting. And, and by the way, my, when I was a town, uh, manager, uh, uh, as town administrator in Littleton, for me, success and what we worked on was having, uh, all the articles pass at annual town meeting in 90 minutes. So, and I did that a few times. And everyone was satisfied because they got to go home, uh, before the football game started or, or baseball, depending upon the season.
Hmm.
I think it's worth a memo that we should all take a look at. It's the next conversation is about how we communicate prior to town meeting and how people are fully educated. There were some pretty interesting thoughts in that memo.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Thank you for raising it, Alice, and thank you, Keith. Uh, Parashar, is Littleton on your list?
It is indeed.
Cool. Yeah, because the question is, you know, best practice there. Uh, you know, what's the impact of that in, in terms of how they perceive, uh, today the success of their meeting? Don't know. But. Uh, so I think I've gone through, uh, everything that, uh, I, I've had, uh, and as well, we discussed a few additional topics. Um, uh, before we close, uh, we'd just like to see if there are any other questions or comments from the public, uh, or from members of the committee. Uh, David Allen, I see your hand, please.
Um. To make that second, second. Uh. You've heard me several times suggest that a central role, as far as I can see, of the committee is educating, educating. And of course, what that means is the committee first educating itself when matters are not as straightforward or a little more complicated than they might be. And then passing that on to the town. Um, the first second, uh, is part of that, educating the town that this is a year-long process and that you can resolve in contention best in meetings. Um. I, much more importantly, I think, uh, I believe you could not be more right, uh, that should is not the committee's place. Uh, but let me suggest that rather than thinking along that trajectory, the way to think is precisely the committee's role in educating town. Uh, it's going to come up in, uh, a variety of different places here. You have raised the largest one of all, that, uh, it's democracy and we're part of it whether or not we want to or not. Instead though of saying, and therefore you should, rather, as far as I know, the way people adopt changes in their behavior is because they get a broader perspective, they see the facts. Uh, the committee's role in this case, I suggest would be to educate that, uh, here's an opportunity to make your democracy even better than it is. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, maybe there's an elevator pitch in the, uh, uh, yeah, um. So with that, uh, I will thank everyone for their, their kind attention this evening. And, uh, again, experiences meeting, uh, uh, when we from today during the day. And then this group again will meet again, uh, two, two weeks from tonight.